Time being 6:30, I call the Halifax Plan of Warding to Session. All members present except for Travis. On the agenda, we have 6:30, PMP Associates modification and site plan, 934 Plymouth Street, ongoing business report from Maryland and near Sherwood Drive in Highland Circle. And we have minutes to approve. Motion to accept the agenda is read.
Motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You ready?
Want to?
Sure.
Where in place particular want to put this? Throw it right up there, right in front of you. Right on the table.
Yeah, table spot.
Alright. Look at that. Alright. So, what we have in front of you. Pat Carra from PMP Associates just representing Mr. Dick Barry. Realty Investments. This is also Bob Pulley. He's kind of handling a lot of the work with the buildings. So, this is the site plan, revised site plan modification for 934 Plymouth Street. This has been before you several times. It's gone through several iterations of construction of this storage facility behind the existing storage buildings. Briefly, it started as a single building. And due to restrictions with fire codes and stuff, they decided to take it and split it into two buildings. When they ran the financials on doing the two separate buildings, having to double up on all the mechanicals, they lost base. They decided that was most cost effective to go back to a single building. Okay, so we went back to a single building. And what we've done is, we've actually now made the lowest level functional. So, we have two stories above, one below. And as you can see in the plans, we're now also accounting for new fire service from the street. So, this was the last site plan that was approved at the top. It was a kind of rudimentary thing, kept referring back to the original site plans. And we decided the best way to do this was to give you guys a comprehensive plan. So, the first sheet shows the detail around the new building. What you see out back is there is a huge existing basin dug out back. And what we're showing is the proposed grade to get it back to what it was originally supposed to be for bottom area side slopes. We've taken the outlet control device, which is shown right here. It's like inside the footprint of the existing building. We're going to add a new catch basin in the packing lot. We're going to create a little low spot around it so it'll take in the flow. We're going to route that into a drain manhole. And then run it around with two more drain manholes and back into the basin again. So, the drainage system is really going to function in the same manner as it was before. So, and we did all the calculations for the impervious lock coverage to show that we're still well within the tolerances for that basin. We're still well below what's allowed in the area for impervious lock coverage. So, and you know, and we're giving now all the grading on this plan and also it's helping the contractors because now they can see it all in one plan. So, that's what this first sheet is. Before I go through, do you guys want to ask me questions about what you're seeing here before I start flipping to the next sheet?
So, right now, the pavement ends here?
Yeah, that's...
Like this catch basin?
No, that's actually in the dirt. The edge of the pavement comes right around like this going...
Okay. So, you're proposing to go out like this?
Yep, yep, and that's...
To here?
Yes. And that's exactly the same thing that we've been proposing all along, was 15-foot access ways down both sides in the building. So, and then what's back here is that this was an outdoor storage area that was approved back with the original site plan approval.
And that's going to stay?
Yeah.
Now, is this getting filled in?
Yes, because that's all the oversized basin right now, the side slopes. So, they'll be filling this in, building the new side slopes into the basin. We're showing the crushed dome, diaphragm trench, and then a garden.
So, you're shrinking the size of what's currently there, or you're saying that...
It's built a whole lot bigger than it was supposed to be originally.
At the top?
Yeah, whoever dug it just kind of like went crazy. So, and that, and the condition of the basin now too is it's getting overgrown with a lot of trees and shrubberies. So, it's going to have to get cleaned out anyways. So, that's part of what they'll be doing in here. And I believe I have notes on this plan to that effect about treatment of the bottom of the basin and stuff. Yes, on the details sheet, I believe I have those notes.
Because it's a good 10 feet deep.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I've been down there.
And this, this is still a three to one slope that's going to be proposed?
Yes.
And it's 15 feet that you're proposing on the sides for the pavement?
Mm-hmm.
I believe after reading some of the notes, I think we have to provide at least 20 feet for fire trucks.
We, the last time we went through this, the fire chief had no comments about the 15-foot width. I believe one of the things he says, he, there was no need for him to ever go down beside that building with a fire truck.
And now, now he's saying he wants 25 feet.
Well, I haven't gotten any comments yet, so that's...
We just got them.
Yeah, so that's, you know, if you guys have comments, we'll have to see what we can do to address that.
But you're probably looking at a different fire chief.
Yeah.
Oh, that's...
Yeah, very plausible. He's concerned with no access to the side, C, the rear, and limited access to the sides of the building. And he would like to go from 15 to 25 feet. The ladder truck requires 19 feet, six inches to set up. So, if he was going to set up next to the building, I think he's obvious point. Okay, and again, which, you know, if you look it out, you know, right now, we're 56% impervious, we're allowed 65. Adding another 10 feet of pavement along the short distances is not going to make any...
But this is flat, isn't it?
Yes, it is. It is, this is, this is very flat coming down both sides.
So, I mean, if this were to be stoned out there, would that give them access too?
It couldn't, it couldn't if you gave them a high pack gravel service.
Which might be better, might be better for the area.
And that's something I guess...
That's going to take a lot of truck.
Yeah, that's going to be up to handling.
Yeah, that's something we just have to negotiate with the fire chief if he wants paved pavement. Or, you know, he said if he'll accept just a gravel surface off the pavement that he can drive on.
With multiple stores, you have to consider if I foul ladder trucks out.
Yeah.
Well, it's three stores.
Yeah.
So, it takes the big truck.
If you had a fire there, I don't see them putting a ladder truck up over here.
I don't either, but I'm not the fire chief. Yeah, that's why I remember that the OT, prior fire chief told us, he's like, "I'll never have to go beside that though." He goes, "If I can't get it from the front, we can't get it." But yeah, I mean, like I said, we'll, we'll have to address that with the fire chief.
Just relating to you what I got from...
Yeah, no, I mean, hey, that, it is what it is, there you go.
Do you get the height of the building?
I believe that was on the architectural plans that we submitted. Bob, that's a better question. I know we're only two stories above it though.
Yeah, there's a section in there, and there's an elevation in there.
That's the office building out front. So, this is our ground level here, and so we're...
This is?
Nope, that's basement, 10-8. And then this is our two stories above. We get 10-8, and then 12-6, so that's 23. 23-2?
So, it's one below grade.
Yes.
And then the total square footage is going to keep you under 4,800, correct? For the building?
No, no, the footprint of the building is... I have that in the paperwork too. But it's 85 by 87.5. Proposed building, 8,157.5.
So, it's this side, the front?
Yeah, because I think we're doing the front to back pitch. Would that work?
Now, are all the storage units going to be accessible from the inside? Or are you going to have doors along the three sides?
There's no exterior access to the storage units, correct? No, they're all climate controlled.
Actually, there'll be no parking along the sides or anything?
No, those access ways are just to have to, just for access.
I'm going to be missing this, but this is all going to be storage lockers, right?
Yeah.
So, where are people going to park other than these spots right here?
Well, that's, I mean, this whole thing is paved. We're providing these parking spaces up front. You know, again, these alleyways are just active for short-term onloading and offloading. You know, it's going to be a typical storage facility where, you know, people aren't going to be there for a short period of time. We've got this big area out back that's 150 by 45. That's going to be all gravel surface. So, you know, if there's overflow parking, they can park out there.
How many actual units would be...
Typically, we don't have maximum more than four or five units at the most.
Right. Right, and that's where I was going to get into, you know, it's a typical storage facility. You don't, generally don't have a lot of people here anyways. I know the day we were up this survey, we did it for six hours, we saw three cars coming in and out.
How many units are being proposed in the new building? Is that on hand?
Bob, do you have the total number of units off the top of your head? Okay. Yeah, there is a, there is a rough floor plan with those architecturals. It kind of shows the layout of the two floors, but...
It's about 150 units overall. Okay, all different sizes, I see. All split up. 10 by 10, 10 by 20, so small ones and... I'm just wondering about those lockers, how many people are going to be accessing it with how much parking there is?
So, there are 30 feet, we need at least an access way of 25 for a fire lane.
Still, I think you could still get that within.
You could cut a little...
Yeah, I think at the 25 because the fence isn't that close. So, we should be, we should be able to provide the 25 inside that fence line.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, there's no problem with that. As I said, if I'd known that ahead of time, I would have just done it.
Those, are there going to be like a loading, I mean, I may get ahead of myself, ahead of myself. Is there going to be a loading dock for any of these lockers? Like a front store, like front area where people will pull up, unload all their stuff, and then come in? Like this is going to be a major traffic point?
I'm Bob Pulley of Boardwalk Storage Solutions. We, basically what we do is, we're construction managers that do design builds strictly for self-storage. To answer your question, there really is only grade access. There's no loading dock as such typically. And that's typical even in, you know, if you had 70,000 square feet of building, you'd probably have one loading area with maybe two parking spaces to service the needs of the building. We've got a third of that in 22,000 gross. Because the self-storage doesn't generate a lot of traffic flow, it's more than adequate for the number of loading areas. We provide carts at the door. Get out your vehicles, take one of the carts, load your cart, go into the building in 15 to 20 minutes.
Makes me...
You're gone. The next, yeah, the next person comes. If you've got more than two vehicles, there's plenty of room for them to access and use the cart. So, they use the carts to transport their goods.
Some of these are a few acres, we haven't cut that far yet.
You're going to have about 30 feet of foundation exposed and then slow down.
What are you proposing for wall against the, this area?
Oh, that's, that's full foundation wall. So, we're going to have a TOF of 68.5. The lowest level's at 56, so we'll have footing below that as well, good. So, that wall in the back will end up being probably a 12-foot pore on top of the footings anyways.
And then that'll be backfilled back up to 64?
Right, yeah, so definitely have plenty of frost coverage back there.
So, is this going to act as a retaining wall in the foundation?
Yes, essentially, yeah.
Will it end up being a 12-inch wall or anything?
It's probably a 10-inch wall, at most.
Yeah, that's, that's for the structural guy to figure out.
Because right now, I was thinking, what, 56? 54?
Yeah, this, yeah, that goes down to 54, and then that's a, I mean, because that's where our rimlet is and then drops into this...
So, that would be the bottom of the wall.
Right.
As far as collecting the, the water from the back of storage building bead to the back of this, you got about a foot drop. All of this is going to shed this way, correct?
Yep, and that's why we get that, that's why that stone, crushed dome trench diaphragm was placed out there. Was it catching the surface runoff before it went down into the basin? So, that'll, that'll catch the surface runoff, it'll get a little bit filtered, and then it'll have trickle down.
And then go down.
Yep.
The last one that you came in with, still had the drainage going through here, we had two buildings, is that it?
Yeah. Yeah, because they weren't going to, they were going to try to work around that drain line. But the more we talked about it, you know, we started looking at the elevations like, well, you know, we can move it around the building and make it proper instead of trying to run a drain line under a foundation, which...
Do you have any problems, you can dig it up?
Exactly. You can flush it, you can repair it, it's accessible.
And so, we said the height would be about 22 feet?
Yeah, it's going to be, I think, higher in the front?
Yeah, the front elevation, I think it has it at 23 feet something.
The slopes of it?
Towards the back.
Yeah.
Single slope.
Yeah, was any bathrooms on the premises right now, like septic system, anything like that?
There is an existing septic system up the front, and we'll see that on the next sheet over to the office building. Which there's actually an approved site plan for relocation of the office building, which we'll see on the next sheet. But as far as it's pulling back in, no, there's no bathroom, no facilities, just a fire service connection.
And one part-time employee, I assume?
That's it.
Don't really need anybody there most of the time, I assume?
No, because it's all, it's an automated gate. She, I mean, I've run to your girl there a few times, I forget her name.
Jane.
Jane. You know, for the most part, if people don't have a passcode, she just buzzes them in and waits until we leave, buzzes them out.
Okay, any other questions on that? No, go to the next sheet.
So, the second sheet. This, this is a picture of the entire site. So, you can now see everything that's going on here. Whereas before, we were just working with that one little snapshot. So, now you can see the entire property. You know, again, there's our basin out back, there's our proposed building, all the same features. And then if you go to the front of the site, you can see the existing buildings, the existing drainage system that we're, we're tying into. There's proposed 20 by 36 office building, which was approved prior to this. And to answer your question, you can see that we actually need to relocate the septic tank. In order to do that, that was all we had approved by the Board of Health and to tie back into the existing leaching system in the front yard. So, we've got the proposed waters, the fire protection water service going up the side and then cutting back into Plymouth Street. I've talked to head of DPW Water Department, water department. Papiya told me that they wouldn't have any objections to the connection. DPW wants us to jack the pipe under the roads. We've got that specified on, you have the jack and board technology to get that connection through. We've got a couple of drains out, out Plymouth Street. That weren't, you know, a lot of this stuff wasn't, wasn't available before on the site plans, and you know, now it's all here. So, you can see the existing entrance point. This is the automated gate that comes across the driveway, existing parking out front. And how we're going to modify the pavement and the parking spaces so we don't lose any space up front of the new office building. So, this again, it's just a, it's, it's wanted to give you guys an overall view of the site, so you can see everything. And again, to help the contractors, so when they're doing the work out there, they have one plan of the entire site that they can work from and know where things are going. So, that was the purpose of doing this, the sheet two. And then sheet three, what we're rolling on here. Those are all the details. Details for the test basin structure, precast mains, main hall, French, pavement detail. We've, we've got the thrust blocks for the water mains, for the bends. We've got a cross-section of the basin with an O and M plan on there. And there, we're specifying the bottom treatment, have been knowing that we want vegetation, daltier material from the basin to clean natural sand. And it's got grades on, so they, you know, they know where they're going with the bottom of the basin in order to make it function properly. I also superimposed on here the plan for the septic tank that was approved by the Board of Health. I felt that should also be part of this, and again, it's, we wanted to be comprehensive plan. We didn't want it to be all bits and pieces here and there. So, then we have our, we have our pavement details for the, for the monolith at Cape Cod Burm, and then for the pavement, two inch by the course, and an inch and a half at top.
So, you, there's a existing office space inside right now?
Yes, it's inside building A currently.
So, you're going to abandon that and the bathroom and everything that's in that?
Yes, that's going to all be abandoned. The water service will get tied into the new building, that's where the bathroom will be for the, for the office.
The changes for this, the water main? Since the change is out of the water main?
Yeah, the, the main changes from what you approved last time, the fire protection water service and the fact that we've gone back to the single building.
Okay, yeah, so everything in the front half here with the other building, that space, exactly the same as what's...
Now that's changing, I just, I wanted to get it all in one plan. Oh, yeah, the only thing that was left was the, the one knock box.
Knox box?
The Knox box, yeah. Because they don't have access to the fire department. Yep. No problem at all. We can put an override on the plan, you know. Did they, did they mention where they might want it, location specific or...
It's going to have to be on the gate.
Good, yeah. Oh, that's right, because of the automated gate.
I assume those are already set up to have a manual override? They just pop in the key and it opens up, even in the case of an emergency or power outage? I don't know how that works, but...
There's a manual override on the inside. The typical, you know, provide a key or PIN access for the fire department, big PIN that we, where it comes from elsewhere. So, they'll do what they need to do to...
Yeah, but...
Well, that's what I'm saying, if...
I think he's suggesting no power, there's no manual override. Being disconnected.
Yeah, how would they get in if power, power was on?
I would have seen one that has, to tell you the truth.
They'd rip the gate down if they have to.
You can actually... Yeah.
There's a man gate at the gate, the Knox box would provide a key that could get access. They could actually, because it...
Oh, and then get around.
Yeah, get to the operator and open the gate down.
Yeah, I mean, worst comes to worst, you put a call into the, to the fire chief. Just say, "Tell me what you want."
He said, "Don't hesitate to call."
So, that's, you know, that's easy enough to take care of, make sure we get it right the first time.
Okay, anybody got any other questions?
No? That looks good.
We could do a motion to approve it, subject to satisfying the fire department?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan modification at the proposed storage facility, 934 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Pending any comments from the fire department and satisfying their requirements. On the, plan dated 6/20/17.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Good luck. You got a copy?
Yes.
Yeah, you got a copy. Awesome, thanks, good. Appreciate it.
Every, every one that I have, there's no kind of a mechanical disconnect or a kind of...
They have it right on the front of the truck.
Exactly, yes.
They have to, they have.
Yeah, that's true. All right?
Thank you.
Good luck, John Much.
Thank you.
The important thing is it's so screwed.
All right, so I'll write up a letter and everything, and you guys can sign it up.
Three meetings in four hours.
We have a special one? Although me and Jonathan are pretty sure that we voted to not have this one when we accepted the other special meeting.
Yeah, that's, I almost, since that was...
It was in the minutes, I might agree with it.
Not to have, can I just mean?
Yeah.
We'll do the special one, but maybe three in a row.
Once you've been gotten, you've done that. Do you wanna do the minutes now, or do you wanna do them later? There's a Morse code over there. Help me, I'm trapped in duck work.
Probably really.
I'm making a motion to accept the meeting minutes for July sixth, two thousand seventeen.
The motions are second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. While we're signing things, make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for July twentieth.
Is the motion to accept July twentieth, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Who is the originals?
Most of it, don't say hobby.
Usually it's good.
I have copies, so...
Carlos actually might have the original for July twentieth.
Yep. Here's the original for the twenty-seventh. Not for the twentieth.
You can't do the twenty-seventh because we don't have all members here to do that.
Yep. He doesn't have the six, and he only has a copy of the twentieth.
Just a recent copy.
Did you get the twenty-seventh back?
So is that both of them?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't have to sign them, good.
And we still signed two copies of each one, don't we?
Usually, but I can always do copies of those.
We have a fancy project.
Yes, we do.
Slap scanner.
Change just that, too.
That we never use.
You can tell what you want.
Well, we do some usually. What pages to use now?
Did you wanna look at, um, Carl?
Another review of Bushwood.
There's even a couple of those spots you're gonna fix. It's fine, isn't it?
Yeah, it seems like their question about the responsibilities, that's not really anything we can help with.
Highland Woods has gotta be paved all the way into that subdivision area, because the entrance hasn't been topcoated all the way into it.
The first entrance has, hasn't it? And then they're gonna just do the exits? I thought they went up around and we're waiting for Sherwood to do the last.
The end is too, I didn't think they did the double ground.
Yeah, but I thought they did the entrance all the way around, most of it, and then stopped before Sherwood. So I'll say they do a Sherwood at the exit. That's what I thought they were doing.
I just hate to see both of those guys pack up and leave, and then there's a section of road that's not finished.
Well, we have, we have the best of the bond right now, so I don't think they'll be leaving anytime soon.
I think it's just a question of who's paying, that's all.
Yeah, as long as it gets done, it's...
Sherwood, Sherwood, we're asking what's the other? I'm gonna hold the bond on Highland as well.
I believe we are. We're never gonna block, and Ed will manage that third party, something or other, but we never do it.
That never came through.
I believe so. I can double check.
What was that going on Sherwood, too?
I know we got one for Sherwood, for Sherwood.
What was the part of that?
Basically...
Because they were buying it from them.
They bought it from the FBS.
Is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
So, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.